Long term, thankful for us and lessons for now and the future, which I'm really interested in hearing, Karen. So Karen retired after serving 24 years as Boone County District Commissioner. I knew it was a while. I got to know her, but 24 years, that kind of commitment, wow. She moved to Missouri from Indiana in 1969. In 2003, she attended Harvard's John F. Kennedy School of Government. And then she went on to get her bachelor's degree in Business Administration at Stevens College. She served, as many of us remember her doing this, as President of the National Association of Counties. From 2003 to 2004, she was actively engaged in associations dedicated to strengthening county government. She was honored, a number of honors, the government's Technology Magazine's Top 25 Doers. Her leadership and service has been recognized by the Columbia Chamber of Commerce, Outstanding Businesswoman of the Year. She's gotten awards from Athena Award. And in 2011, she became the alumni of the Greater Missouri Leadership Challenge. In retirement, she, of course, is continuing to build communities. She holds these, as she mentioned, card games, parties with a purpose to connect women leaders and introduce them to new enterprises. She also volunteers with the Boone County Culture Center, where she spent a lot of hours working to preserve our history. Okay, Karen, you get to tell us about your recent big award. I'm looking forward to hearing about it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate being invited today. Like I said, it's a little awkward because I'm used to a podium where I can have my notes and I can look at you and I can look down. Now I'm going to be all over the place. But it was important to write it because when you think about the lessons and how they apply today and what our history's been, I had to have it written down or I'd never get it straight. But what Alice is alluding to, I was fortunate enough to be inducted into the Boone County History Makers Hall of Fame this last Saturday as the living recipient. And it was a wonderful honor, you know? It was so humbling and so emotional. It still is. I mean, Sarah was there with me. And it was something that I wasn't really expecting. So it was nice to see so many friends. And all my siblings came, so I talk about them all the time because family is really important to me. And so I wanted them there to be with me. So if you're okay, I'll just kind of move on with what I plan to talk about today, okay? So, you know, it's a pleasure to be among friends and colleagues and fellow public servants that care as deeply about Boone County as I do, about the place we call home. And, you know, my political journey began in a place most people wouldn't even expect, but the restaurant business is really what got me started, restaurant bar business. It was there at the establishment that my customers first encouraged me to run for office. And with support of friends and mentors, I entered a race I hadn't planned on and won. You know, how unlikely is that? I was a restaurateur. From that day forward, for 24 years, I had the privilege of serving Boone County. And so my first lesson is listening is the heart of service. And when I first ran, my campaign focused on passing a half-cent sales tax for roads and bridges, not because they weren't maintained, but because they didn't have the resources to do it right. It wasn't glamorous, but it mattered. And roads and bridges are the arteries of our local economy. Throughout my time in office, I tried to stay focused on what mattered most, solving problems, cutting through the bureaucracy, and making sure people were heard. Public service, I learned, is less about grand gestures and more about steady, patient work of building trust. One conversation at a time. Sometimes it takes a lot of conversations to get that trust, but that is a key to building a coalition of people to help you achieve what you feel is best for the county. So my first lesson is this, if you want to lead, you must be willing to listen. Lesson two, courage isn't always comfortable. There were moments of joy and pride, but also moments of doubt and hard choices. One of the toughest votes I ever took went against what many people in South County wanted from me. I worried about it. I prayed about it. In the morning of the vote, I received a quote from Simone Perez. "It's better to be controversial for the right reason than popular for the wrong one." That wisdom gave me the courage to make the right decision, and it stayed with me for the rest of my service and continues to. So my second lesson is leadership requires courage, especially when it costs you politically. Lesson three, you think beyond yourself. It's a bigger audience out there than just what you want to achieve. Those moments of courage taught me something else, that leadership just isn't about standing firm. It's about standing up for those who aren't in the room. Beyond Boone County, I became active in Missouri National Association's counties, where I often saw that rural America didn't have a seat at the table. We weren't even cared about when we had the majority of the counties in the country. That motivated me to seek a leadership role as president, as was said. Because someone once said, if you aren't at the table, you're probably on the menu. I wanted Boone County's voice and the voice of counties like ours to be heard. So my third lesson is this, public service is more about your own backyard. It's about making sure your community has a voice for the larger conversations. So going on to lesson four, it's make room for others. I think that's one of the key things that a lot of people forget about. Over the years, I've learned leadership isn't about holding power. It's about creating that space that makes people feel comfortable to join you and step in and contribute. Our democracy works best when new voices are welcome to the table, when younger generations are encouraged to step up, and when diversity of perspective is valued, not feared. Some of my proudest moments were about what I accomplished, but about the people I mentored, what they were able to do and to lead and to make their own impact. So lesson four is the future of public service depends on making room for others. And that's something that I think the Mule Skinner's and the Boone County Democratic Party does a good job of, including all generations and working together to try and make a difference. So you think about today's time and looking at today through a historical lens. And that's something that, when I started researching all the controversies that had happened in the life of our country, it's amazing, but, you know, I won't pretend that these aren't serious today. We face growing polarization, distrust in institutions. People are afraid to leave their homes, a culture that sometimes rewards cynicism more so than cooperation. But here's the truth, these challenges aren't new. Our country has faced deep divisions before, and what carried us through then will carry us through now, are the same principles I tried to live by in public service. Listening, courage, thinking beyond ourselves, and making room for others. After the Civil War, when 600,000 lives had been lost, the nation seemed broken beyond repair, Americans somehow found the courage to rebuild. The 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments, imperfectly fulfilled as they are, were born from struggle for justice and unity. We learned that then, that democracy survives only when we keep expanding who we, the people, are. And then followed the Great Depression, and unemployment reached 25%. Families lost everything. People questioned whether democracy could endure. Despair could have easily given way to a dictator, as it did elsewhere. But instead, Americans rolled up their sleeves, built new programs, reimagined what government could do to protect ordinary citizens, and faith in one another and impossibility pulled us back from the edge. We faced a moral reckoning again during the Civil War, Civil Rights Movement, when citizens, many of them young, demanded that our democracy live up to its promises. The Civil Rights and Voting Rights Act didn't come easily. They came because people refused to give up on the ideal that all voices should count. That era reminds us that protest and patriotism walk hand in hand. And with our own lifetime, we faced grief and fear after 911. For a moment, the country came together, not because we agreed on everything, but because we remembered what bound us together was stronger than what divided us. It shouldn't take tragedy to remind us, we're all in this together. So yes, our politics are messy and our culture feels divided. But we faced worse. We've come out wiser. The through line of American history isn't perfection, it's perseverance. I know it gets very tiring. We all keep trying to persevere on making a difference. And sometimes you feel like you're not making any progress. And every generation has been asked in its own way to prove that democracy still works. So, you know, if we apply these things to the future, what my lessons that I learned, there's one thing that history teaches us. It's that progress has never been automatic. It takes ordinary people choosing to do the hard work of listening, compromising, staying at the table, even when it would be easier to walk away. That's what I tried to do for 24 years in public service, whether it was fighting for a half-cent sales tax, navigating controversy over county growth, or advocating for Boone County at the national level. The lessons were the same. Lasting change can only happen when people feel heard and included. Boone County has always been a place where people rolled up their sleeves and get things done. Where neighbors still talk across the fences, across differences. That's the kind of local strength our country needs more of today. Public service taught me that you can't fix everything, but you can move things forward, sometimes by inches, sometimes by miles, but always forward. And that's why, despite everything we see and read today, I remain hopeful. Because I've seen what happens when people show up, not for credit or headlines. I've seen farmers, teachers, small business owners, neighbors come together to solve problems that once seemed impossible. Now, hope isn't blind optimism, it's a decision. To believe our institutions are worth protecting and that our community's worth investing in, our neighbor's worth listening to. When I look at the next generation, young people stepping into leadership, questioning old systems and insisting on transparency, I see the same spark that guided every era of renewal in this country. They're impatient, yes, but impatience is often the first step toward progress. So my lesson after these years is simple. Democracy doesn't survive on autopilot. It survives when people who care stay engaged, when those with experience mentor those with energy, and when we remember that leadership at its best is an act, not status. Act of service, not status. If we keep listening, keep showing up, and keep making room for others at the table, I believe this crisis, like others before, will find resolution. When I think, to come back full circle, when I think about my time at the establishment, I never could have imagined that pouring a cup of coffee and listening to people's concerns about everyday life would one day lead to public service. But that's where I first learned that what service really means, to listen, to care, and to act. In many ways, that little restaurant was my first commission chamber. And the people who walked through its doors were my first constituents. Those early conversations taught me that leadership begins not with a title, but with willingness to hear someone else's story. And that same lesson has carried me through every since. So I think about it here today, looking back and looking forward. I'm reminded that our democracy endures because of people like you. People who show up, people who listen, people who stay at the table, even when it's hard. The challenges ahead are real, but so is the hope that comes from service, the quiet, steady kind that keeps a caring Boone County strong. Thank you for listening. Thank you for caring. And thank you for continuing to show up what true public service looks like. And I'd be glad to take questions. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Karen. I'd my congratulations for this most recent award as I see hands going up with people who have questions. When we call on you, please unmute yourself and maybe show your face if you're able to, because Karen might want to be reminded of it. I think it was Kathy Jensen's hand that went up first.
Karen, I was interested in knowing more about the establishment, where it was located, what kind of food you served, and so on. I didn't know that you were involved in a restaurant.
I owned my own restaurant lounge for 11 years. And it was called The Establishment. It's where the 18... You're muted.
Unmute yourself, Karen. Something happened.
I didn't think I did that. Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay. So the establishment is south of town where the Tap House is now. Johnny's Beanery bought it from me. And I had, like I said, for 11 years, it was a neighborhood restaurant and lounge. I made my own. Everything was scratch made. We made our own bread for our sandwiches, and we made soups and desserts and blue-plate specials during the week. But it was a place where everybody knew everybody. One of the things that I required of my staff, if I walked up to the bar, you better be able to tell me the first name of everybody sitting at the bar. And if there was somebody new, you had better introduce them to people on both sides of them. Because as people became friends, that's more clientele you're going to have down the road. And so it really worked well. And I didn't care if you were the ditch digger or the banker. I didn't care what your last name was, what you did. We only wanted to know what your first name was and what you drank, you know? And we were trying to be as welcoming to everybody. And it worked for a lot of years.
When did the establishment close?
Well, I sold it on Christmas Eve, 1993, my first year in office, because I told the people, if it ever interfered with my job that I was elected to do, I would sell it. And so in September, I was supposed to represent the county at Stevens College with our First Lady here, Hillary Clinton. And my cook didn't show up, so I had an ethical dilemma. And I chose to cook. I felt it wasn't fair to my customers that were daily customers. I didn't think it was fair to my waitstaff that counted on those dollars. And so as soon as the next shift came in, I went to Jeff Gwynn, the business broker, and listed my business before I even went home. So...
Wow, that's a great story.
You know, that's the kind of the way I do things. I just respond, you know, at the time. I don't take a lot of time to dwell on it. Because I told the people I would do that, so I did.
The Mallorys had their hand up. Was that the same question?
Pretty much. Not being in Boone County for that long, I wondered if a restaurant was still in business and where it was and what the name of it was. But you pretty well answered that. I guess it's not still in business, though.
Yeah, it is. It's different than it was when I was there, but it's still a local neighborhood bar and restaurant.
Okay, great. Okay, I have a question while others are... I think the one thing that kind of bothers our organization is we don't know if we're keeping up, you know, with what we should be doing. It is hard to bring in younger people, particularly since COVID, to our way of doing things. And you've had a long tenure with probably lots of changes, even during that time, not to mention since then. So do you have any advice that you can give to us about when you see the need for change and when you have to work to try to keep your institutions basically healthy? I think that's the general question that I'd like to hear your advice about.
You know, that's why I do my parties with a purpose. And I do parties with a purpose, like when our new President of Stevens College came in. I did a party with a purpose for her, and I invited women executives across the community that could help be sounding board for her if she needed something in all different ways of life. And it's those... And my parties with a purpose always have people from the 20s to the 80s. I'm very intergenerational, because I believe my grandmother lived with me for 18 years. And that inner... I had so much respect for the older generation that I want them included with the younger generation so the younger generation can pick up some of the skills, that the wisdom comes from that older generation. And it seems to work, and people really like it. The young people like it as well as the older people. So it's fun.
Okay, great. Good discussion of that issue. I want to note for our audience that we usually try to figure out if there's any candidates for elected office present or if there's any members of the media. And surveying, I see neither one, although we do have people here who are, you know, serving in various ways otherwise, just not in elected office. Kathy Jensen, another question.
Yes, I'm interested in knowing more about that very controversial and difficult decision you made, that I think maybe it had to do with infrastructure.
It did. It was at the airport. Mr. Levy wanted to develop around the airport. And South County thought it was going to be their savior. You know, they expected to get lots of dollars from it. And... But he didn't want to invest in the infrastructure that it takes to run an operation that was out there. And I was the swing vote, so it was really painful. Lynda voted yes, or Donny voted yes. Donny voted no. Lynda voted yes. Donny voted no. And so I was the swing vote. It was my district. And I mean, I worried about that vote so much. But I just knew it wasn't right. He needed to put his money into the pot and not the taxpayers' dollars, because if it went bad, we didn't want to be on the hook for it. So I voted no. It was very painful. The next day, Jane Flink, the editor of the Boone County Journal, who was a friend, called me and said, "I wrote a scathing editorial about you. You were wrong." And I just said, "Thank you. I'll never read it. Thanks for letting me..." And I have never read it to this day. Because she was a friend, and I didn't want to lose a friendship over reading words that were taken when they were angry. So I just... I'm always very direct about things, as people that know me very well know. I mean, at one time, I had a... When the county constitution vote was going on, I had a constituent in Midway that had written to the editor that I should be recalled because I wasn't looking after the county people, that I was all in on this, you know, takeover of county government. And I wasn't. I didn't support it. I didn't want a city manager form of government for the county. So I was not supportive of the Constitution. And so he always had coffee every morning over at Midway at Blue Acres. Is it Blue Acres? No, it's not. Whatever it was out there. And so I called them and wanted to know what time Bob Green came in for coffee in the mornings. And they told me, this was on a Sunday. It was in the Sunday papers. So it was on that Sunday. So on Monday morning, I was there before he was, with all his buddies at the roundtable. And it was really fun, because he was in shock, and his buddies were egging him, you know, were really pounding on him. It turned out that Bob did fundraisers for me. He became one of my biggest supporters. It's kind of like when you think you know something, if you don't have the whole story, and then you spout off, and then you embarrass yourself, and that's where he was. And I just felt like I had to take on those kinds of things directly, because they were wrong. They never called me and asked me about it. They just assumed they knew. And that wasn't who I was or what I expected to do. So... One of those things.
That's very interesting. Catherine, Alan is next. Can you unmute yourself, Catherine?
Okay. Yeah, I wrote this in chat. And I'm just finishing with my book club about the takeover of Indiana by the Ku Klux Klan. You know, it's like 100 years ago, deja vu. But it's... Before I read this book, I was concerned, why we use words like fear and afraid? These are probably just the commentators of that Republicans are afraid to oppose what Trump is doing. And it's so obvious that it's against the Constitution that I wonder why the words fear. Now, there is plenty of violence now that I don't remember as a kid or as an adult growing up. Do you have any explanation why? And Karen is someone, she didn't fear if she was going to lose her office, you know, if she took a stand. I don't, you know, backbone seem not to exist in the Republican Party. And can anybody help me understand better?
I think you've hit it on the head, Catherine. It's people are afraid of losing their jobs. And instead of standing up for what they believe is right... And I think we're over, we're crossing somehow. I just didn't worry about it. I felt like if the good Lord and the citizens of Boone County wanted me, they'd elect me again, and if they didn't, I'd find something else to do. I wasn't looking for a job when I found this one. You know, I owned my own business, so, I mean, it wasn't like I had to have the job. And then when I sold it, it was my only income, but I could have found something else to do. I have complete confidence. You're muted again, Catherine. You're muted again.
Yeah, I'm okay. Yeah. I just read this morning that there's a Rutgers professor who's leaving the country.
I read that, too.
And he definitely received death threats. And I just, I thought, oh my God, that has to be a consideration. I guess I'm still very, you know, what's the word, pie in the sky. I believe in the Constitution, and I wanted to follow. And I wish that more Republicans were like you. Okay, it's a job, you know? But they don't seem to be that way. I'll quit.
I think it's human nature that people go there first, or they're afraid of their job. But then, after they get there and find that, if they're afraid to make good decisions, they need to find another job. You know, they need to be the one that makes that choice, that they aren't cut out for the job if they don't have the wherewithal to do what's right for the people and just toe the party line. I never did. I mean, I had Democrat, a lot of Democrats, that thought I was a Republican, closet Republican. That's what they called me, you know? And I'd have primaries and I'd have generals. And I just, I finally got where I just told the Democrats, if you want to run somebody against me, you can do that, but I'm going to take the money out of the party, because I can raise money. So you can figure it out. I'll either take the money and stay with you or... You know, it's just, I mean, the first... I mean, the first time I, I had an opponent that was a Green Party candidate, Jeff Barrow. And he didn't like that I wasn't focusing on trees and stuff. Well, I was focusing on sewer going into creeks. That to me was just as environmental as tree. And I'm a big tree lover. You know, my yard, it's huge trees. But it's, it's just got, my whole thing was all about the structure and the basics. Let's just get the basics covered and then we can do other things. And so.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, for that interesting discussion with Karen. Alice, you have a question.
I don't know if it's a question. So Karen, I'm impressed with your optimism. I protest, it seems like I'm doing Democratic stuff five days a week or six days a week. I watch Meet the Press, which people tell me not to watch the news, but I want to know what's going on and I want to know from both sides what's going on. And also youth, for the Democrats at least, where are they? And in our weekly protests, where are they? I know they're angry, or at least the ones that are informed, that's an important distinction, are angry. Where, where do you see this optimism, dear? I mean, I'm struggling. I have grandchildren. I will do everything to stop the invasion of our cities. And St. Louis is coming. Where do you get your optimism, dear? I mean, I'm a student of history. This is very hard. I'm a student of the Holocaust. This is very hard.
But those two things turned around. I mean, you know, it happened, but the, the country came out not unscathed. They had to work through it, but I think stronger and a lot of times with these historical battles that are internal. And my, my niece is what took me down to the protests. She said, Karen, I need you to go with me. So I did, you know? And I feel like if she wants to do that, I want to help her do that. Because I agree that we can't just sit at home. I think that's part of the problem. And I feel just as guilty about just sitting home and writing postcards. I mean, I do things like that, but you need to be more involved than that. And I know that about myself.
Thank you.
Okay, Mallory, so maybe a different question now.
Yes, yes, Karen, I want to know, have you ever, or have you ever considered running for statewide office or something else higher?
No. Honestly, David, when I, when I decided not to run, I made the announcement ahead of time so people could line up whoever they wanted. I didn't wait to the last minute, even though I was requested to do that. I just didn't think it was right. So I thought it needed to be open to the whole field of Boone Countyans that are in the district. And I could just see the handwriting on the wall. My last year or two, I, I was chair of the Commissioners Association Legislative Committee. And I just almost had to beat myself to go down Jeff City because it just was not, it wasn't what it was when I first started, where people could work across the aisle. They could have a good idea, you know? It's like Judy Baker. She said, a couple of things of mine got passed, but it was after I was gone because they wouldn't give me the credit. She said, and I didn't care about the credit, I just wanted to get it passed, you know? So I, I think it, people worry too much about who's going to get credit for doing something. And that's why we don't get things done. And so, and then whenever things start happening in DC, it rolls down the hill. So now it's in the state level. And I didn't want it coming to the Boone County Commission with me in it. So.
I guess back to Kathy, I think your hand has gone up.
Yes. Karen, you mentioned an effort to change the Boone County form of government. And you mentioned the Constitution. What was that about?
Well, instead of, instead of a charter form of government, it was a constitutional form of government. And it had a lot of the same parameters, but it, it had some differences. And there was a Constitution Committee and the judges were over it. And they put together this Constitution where we would have like a county manager that would take over all the departments. Well, I'm, I'm a worker bee. So I, when I was in office, I was over the IT department, the planning and zoning department, and the several departments. And they changed up every couple, four years, we might change something up. But I was their day to day person that oversaw that department. So if the department had a problem, they'd come to me. I, and then working with Mr. Beck, I have great respect for him because he took care of his little city, but he couldn't think outside those city boundaries. And it was not fun or easy to solve problems when you have one partner that doesn't agree. I mean, like with the road tax, they totally were against that and did all kinds of fighting trying to get it overturned, but it didn't, it kept it. And, and just, my last project was the 911 Center. And Ray Beck thought it was the worst place I could have possibly put it, was out there at Sheriff's Department. It should be downtown, you know? So it's that kind of mentality where we live in this bubble of Columbia and that's all we care about instead of the county of Boone, which I'm, I'm part of the state of Missouri, part of the county of Boone, part of the city of Columbia. And I just think you have to look bigger than yourself. You have to look at the whole picture of how it affects things. But anyway, I can't even remember where I started this. What was it you asked me, Kathy?
It was about that change of, of city government.
Oh, yeah, the Constitution. So anyway, I didn't want the, the departments to be over by one person that took, and there was, and Mr. Beck wouldn't let his, like the city council can't go to the department heads without his authority to go talk to them. I wasn't going to have that kind of thing. I, it's, I'm too casual of a person. If I have an issue, I want to go take care of it. I don't want to wait. So I was not for the Constitution, probably would not be for a charter. And unless it was written so that the government stayed the same, but we could make our own rules.
Who was pushing that, that change?
Oh, I don't know. I have all the paperwork. It's in my files. I, I kept everything. And there's a good, there's a good file of all that stuff I left at the county for future commissioners when it comes up again, they'll need to figure out what we did or didn't do.
And what years was that going on?
Oh, David Luthold, do you remember? David was around then, but I, I mean, I think we had one vote on a county, on a charter and then one vote on this Constitution. So two times it's went down.
I think it was in, well, it was in the eighties and the nineties, wasn't it?
I don't, well, I wasn't there in the eighties, so. David, do you remember when we had the Constitution vote? Yeah, I muted himself, but he, I'm not hearing anything, so. I just thought he might remember. Al Tacker might remember.
Well, I thought it was nineteen nineties.
Yeah, it's, it was in the nineties, but I couldn't remember when.
Well, maybe that, maybe that's close enough for, for us, so no one else is coming up with the exact date. Does Alice have another question? Or should I ask one now? Your hand is up, Alice. Well, let me ask then, because you've given us insight into your reasons for having the positions that you have. And they remind me of something that I've always thought about. It seems to me we have a pretty big city to have only six council members plus a mayor and a really big county to have only three commissioners. And yet you're talking about, you know, not wanting to have a manager that, that there would be actually people, elected people, commissioners, who would be in charge and touch with all the people doing this work. And, and, and I guess I'd like to hear more of your opinion about, does the number, the small numbers that we have seem right to you? Do you expect them to get bigger? There, are there any problems with this system that, that you'd like to talk about? Or that, that, that sort of structural comment?
Well, my feeling is we were paid well. It was a full-time job and we needed to treat it like a full-time job, which I did. I very much spent way more than forty hours a week at the office, you know? And people would say, well, people call you at home. No, they don't. They call me during office hours because I respond, I return my phone calls, you know? You can't, but I was available. I was approachable. And I think that if you get commissioners that have another job and just want to come in for the county commission meetings and things like that, then you're probably going to have to do something different. But at the time, while I was there, we, I was the closer. I was always the closer on everything. I was the one that kind of finished up stuff. People would think things up. We'd have meetings and work out the details of a policy or whatever. I'd be the one that would make sure it got across the line, you know, just in this, the grunt work part of it. I was just one of those that I got to have, get it off my plate. So let's, let's finish this. And, you know, like I said, if you have people that are working somewhere else and just treat this as a part-time job, then you're probably going to have to have a county manager or, or more commissioners. Because it's, as we grow as a county, it's bigger and bigger. And but we have to remember, we are a county of elected officials. And each one of those elected officials has authority for their part. So, you know, it's not, we're not over everything. Yes, we're over the money, you know, making the decision on budgets and stuff. But the way we did it, bring, you know, we had a, had a, like a zero base budget where what you used last year for your core budget would stay automatically. And then if you had new things you wanted to add, you had to put them in the, propose those. And then we would have meetings of all the elected officials or whoever was in, like we had the 911 tax that had the Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management, and it had the, the Prosecutor's Office. And everybody, the judges, everybody that was in law enforcement was involved in that 911 fund. And so we would have meetings and they would tell each other what they needed. And I mean, one day the sheriff said, Danny needs a prosecutor a lot more than I need a deputy. Now, you know, you got a good form of government when people could work together like that and recognize where the greatest need is that day, you know, in that time. And that's because we had great public officials. I mean, you guys have elected some really good public officials. And so I always said, the commission had knowledge about an inch deep and a mile wide. And every elected official, their, their knowledge was, or their, a knowledge was a mile deep and their vision was an inch wide because they're only focused on their stuff. But, you know, that's the way it worked. And we were over the department heads. But we had a lot of help with all those elected officials. So that's why it works, I think.
Thank you for that very interesting and I think still apt description of our, our county government. Peter Schneberger asks, do you think elected officials have a responsibility to lead?
I do. And I think that's why we had, Pat Linsmeyer was national president for the Collectors. Betty Johnson was national president for the, the Recorders. I was national president over all county governments. But we, and the sheriff is always leading the pack on new things and what's going on. We all, and Wendy Noren was queen at that, you know? And Wendy, Wendy always said, we want to be on the cutting edge, but not the bleeding edge. So let somebody else do it first and kind of get the bugs worked out. Then we'll be ready to, to invest in our county.
Well, I'm glad you brought up Wendy. She's, she's mentioned very often at our meetings because we're so concerned about elections and that sort of thing, but also because she, she really had insight into that particular aspect of, of our county's importance, I think.
That was one of my favorite things about being national president. I appointed her as the rural representative to the, to whoever's over all election stuff in Washington. And she wrote the rules, the new rules that we live by today. Her and a lady out of Maricopa County, Helen Purcell, she was the urban person I appointed. And the two of them were like two peas in a pod. Boy, they were smart. They knew how to work together. They figured out, she was Republican, Wendy was, I tried to always balance that. And it was, it's just a joy to have worked with her. I mean, there was frustrations working with Wendy, but there was, you always knew things were happening for the right reason and what was going to get done was going to be done well. And I think Brianna has stepped right into that spot. I am so proud of Brianna. I'm proud of Jenna. I'm proud of all the elected officials I've been honored to work with a little bit.
I had the privilege of being with Wendy on the night of her last election, the election when Donald Trump was elected. And I was in the, in the counting office as an observer. And, you know, I, I didn't get to know her that well because I came on a bit late. But I certainly knew her from hearing all my, my colleagues here talk about the things that she, she had done and, and kind of brought color, I think, to, to the life of county government and will never be forgotten for those things.
It will.
Steve Callaway, I see your hand.
Hi, Steve.
Hey, Karen. Thanks so much for being on today. It's a pleasure to, to hear you. And Iris is here. I said Karen's on today and she said, oh, that's going to be good, no question. My question has to do with city and county. It kind of bothers me that I, I don't typically hear much of the county weighing in on issues of things like recently going on in the city. And maybe that's good, you know? No need to maybe stick your foot in where, you know, somebody else has already got two feet in and whatever. But I am interested, since Columbia is part of Boone County, how, how is the county feeling that they, or do you have a sense of how they should weigh in or might weigh in on this sort of thing? You know, typically, the comparison we hear is the city police compared to the sheriff's office and the county, you know, law enforcement folks. And they're compared in not necessarily a good way about, you know, how they've treated around disparities and stops and all that kind of stuff. But I am interested that, that this is really, it's a county issue, although people want to make it out a city issue. And that has created a lot of division. And sometimes you might even overlay the idea that the city, that the rural folks and the urban folks, you know, Columbia's urban, right? That, that they have different interests. And I don't think that's the situation. I don't think they're different interests. I think they're really other side because our folks from surrounding Boone County come into the city and I don't hear them being worried about stuff going on. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I can tell you what it was. There was several city managers while I was in office. But when Bill Watkins became city manager, we would meet every month, every other month, the commission and Mr. Watkins. And we, we each could put things on the agenda. Nobody could knock them off. You know, we weren't going to do something that was going to embarrass each other, that wasn't going to make for good relations. But, you know, we talked through a lot of this kind of thing about what we could do together and how, what resources we had that might help in different problems, you know? Or what resources they had that might help. Or what resources they had that might help us. And I found it enlightening and really helpful. And then when the next city manager came along, he wasn't interested in doing that. So I think relationships kind of backed off at that point. I think it all starts with, with that kind of thing with the city manager. If the city manager allows the police chief to work with the sheriff or, you know, the public works to work together or whoever it is that's got the issue. Like we have to work together on, on water, stormwater. Stormwater doesn't care about a boundary. You know, and, and honestly, the citizens don't care about a road boundary. They just want their roads nice. They just want to be able to know that they're safe. They don't care if the sheriff is taking care of safety or the city is taking care of safety. They just want to know someone is on top of it. And I think that I, I, I know the sheriff and the city police chief, when I was there, met quite regularly together, but it's different people now. So I don't know if they meet or if they don't meet. You know, we do have to work together. We are one county. And we, and the city of Columbia is the largest part of Boone County by far. And, but you know, we have responsibilities the city doesn't have. It's like we have to do all the summonses and all the things that they have to, to serve, that they serve all the city ones too, you know? So, and they don't get paid for it. So there's always these tension things that the legislature sets up when they do bills and doesn't make it equitable. And we're blessed in Boone County because we have the resources. But these other counties, they really struggle when they're required to do things that are outside their, what they feel is their responsibility. And so I just, I believe that we just all have to work together, whoever we are, whether it's across county lines or across city lines, we need to work together.
Yeah. Thank you, Karen. Thanks for weighing in on that.
We have a question in the chat from our Zoom Meister, Dave Taylor. He just is curious about your card games. He wants to know a little more about your thoughts on card games with the purpose, how, what you've learned, what they've done.
My card games are different people. I, I have, I use Samba Canasta every other Monday. I do hand and foot every other Monday and twice a month on Fridays. I do euchre twice a month on Tuesdays. I do oh hell, once a month on the first Monday. I do peonicle the third Wednesday at night. And it all started with, I saw one of my former King's Daughter's members. And she was wanting to know if anybody played peonicle. And I said, well, I do. And she said, well, I'd really like to play peonicle again. And I said, well, why don't you put it on Facebook? See who wants to play peonicle? Well, she doesn't do Facebook. And so I put it on. And that's how I got my groups. I mean, it just, it's been a word of mouth thing and it's been very eclectic, different people. I, I thoroughly love it. You know, my card gals are some of my best friends.
Well, I wish my grandmother were here to hear about this, you know? I don't think I played much cards since she died, but she, she made her grandkids play poker. And we didn't play bridge, but we played poker. I remember that. And, and other hard games and thought it was, thought it was a good, good way to get to know the family. And so I see that this, this, this kind of, she also knew a lot of different games as you do. And so I'm very impressed by that.
I'm going to be playing with Sarah's mom and dad in about a half hour. And that, and that happened during COVID. They used to go to the senior center and would play hand and foot over the senior center. And during COVID, it got shut down. And a friend of mine, one of my longest known friends in Columbia that I had from the holiday end days, she was playing with a group and they closed down. And I said, well, I'll tell you, I don't know how to play. If you guys will teach me, I'll host. So that's how that got started, you know? It's just a need. I thought it was a need and they did too. So it works out just fine.
I think our last question of the day, because we want you to get, get rested for that important game. Our last question today will come as probably appropriate from David Luthold.
Got to unmute, David.
He's working on it, I think. Can you get yourself unmuted, David?
There he is.
Karen, I, I wanted to ask about how you decided how much money to spend on the elections. I, I noted that compared to other places, we seemed to have a lot of precincts and didn't have people standing in line. And lots of places, they, they did have lots of people standing in line. And I figured that that depended in, in large part upon the amount of money that you budgeted for the elections. Could you talk a little about the process of deciding on how much money would be spent on elections?
Well, I think everybody believed that elections was critical to the operation of county government. And Wendy was a great salesperson. I mean, she could make a case for why we needed new voting machines or, or disability machines or whatever they were that she needed. And we really, we planned for, you know, because it wasn't a big cheap, it was not a cheap investment. It was a large investment. So it, it might take two years of setting money aside to have the funds that we needed to make that big purchase. But over those two years, she would be doing the RFP, making sure she got all the, he's dotted the, or the I's dotted and the T's crossed for sending out a proposal to get the best piece of equipment and service out of the equipment seller that she needed. And it just kind of worked, but all of our elected officials and everybody in county government support making sure our elections are, are held in a fair, equitable way for all of our citizens. And I don't think we ever really pushed back on that much. But it was her. I really believe it was her being, she did all the research. She was so well-known in the national elections world that she, she was on top of her game.
And she left behind a staff and a legacy that continues today. And thank you, Karen, for coming today and giving us insight into our past. I want to say our illustrious past because when I, when I hear you talk about it, I think more about the great wins and the great troubles that we still have, of course. But they're both, both, both of those things are there. You've been very clear about that. Thank you so much for coming today.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it. Guys have a, huh? Have a good afternoon. You're welcome.
Okay. We'll let Pam get up her announcements and I'll, I'll remind you that we have, we have our officers meeting after, after these announcements. We'll probably want to see these announcements before we talk about whether there's any business. The only business I can think of are things that are probably